To the Planning Board hearing, since we're a public meeting in a public space, I think we should start with the ledgers. All rise.
President, Secretary of State, and to the Republic, what of saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this is a hearing by the Planning Board. My name's Ted Masters. I'm the acting chair of the Planning Board. We have Mark Bourghuis, Harry Perry, Ron Cagle, Vincent Basile, Jessica Insaka, Rob Froman, also on the Planning Board. Our attorney, village attorney today is representing Stephen Kiley. He's representing Joe Prokop, who's had another meeting. And we have our village engineer here, who's going to present the plan, Chip Voorhees and Chris Voorhees. And they're basically representing the applicant, which is the village. This hearing is being held pursuant to the public notice posted in the Village Town Herald on December 21st and December 28th. The notice and the proof of the publication will be made part of the record. Due to the interruption of the holidays, there was a little bit of a delay in the second notice for this hearing. So this hearing will remain open for less than seven days after re-notification is made. So this is gonna, this hearing is gonna be, when we're done tonight, we'll just adjourn the hearing, but it'll remain open until another notification can be made. So anticipating probably January 29th. And at that time, if there are any more comments, come to the meeting and you can still add comments. I also will provide for any written comments up until that time, if they're submitted. Just send those to Village Plan Board, Attention, Planning Board. Let me go through everything first. Okay. This hearing is authorized under the local law, Chapter 64, Docking Boards, Section 64-22, Procedure for Design Review for Village Docks. This is something that the Planning Board worked very hard to, you know, put together, modifying our existing dock law to provide for design requirements of a village dock. The Planning Board has reviewed the plans that the village had put together, and determined that the design meets the criteria described in that chapter, 64. So this hearing is on the design of the dock. Final approval or any costs associated with construction of the dock is made by the trustees. So what we're gonna do here is, listen, if anybody has comments, Nelson Pope and Voorhees is gonna get out there, gonna present the plan and some of the design features, and then you'll have an opportunity to comment on the design features. And then what we'll do is take what we hear from the public and present our findings to the trustees, once the hearing is closed. And that will be, again, after the anticipated date of the 29th. So what I'd like to do is, then have Chip here to present the... Please, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ted. My name is Chip Voorhees of Nelson Pope and Voorhees, and I'm an environmental planning consultant with about forty years of experience throughout Long Island. I'm also a licensed merchant marine officer, post guard licensing and a lot of experience voting on Fort Jefferson Harbor. And I'm joined by my son, Chris Voorhees, who is a licensed professional engineer with Nelson and Pope Engineers. And we've been working hand in hand with respect to permitting, as well as design and preparation of plans that would facilitate the construction of the proposed community pier. My involvement started in 2016, when we prepared a feasibility study for the trustees. And based on that, launched into some permitting and preparation of plans that I'll be presenting to you this evening. And tonight is obviously the Planning Board meeting for the review of those plans in accordance with the village law. Site is at the end of Washington Street, as we know. It's the existing California Beach Park. First thing we did was obtain soundings, in other words, the depth of water at low tide, in order to determine the depth to achieve for the purpose of navigation, but also for design, because it's critically important, both in the village law and under DEC requirements, to ensure that the float itself will not rest on the bottom. I'll describe each of the components of the dock. Once soundings were obtained, we positioned a structure in the optimal location to take advantage of depth that is achieved as quickly as possible as you move out from the shoreline. And that location ended up being right here. The various components are, we have the upland parking lot area, there'll be some restripping of stalls in proximity to the access to the pier. There will be an ADA access ramp of concrete with a landing before traversing to the fixed dock itself. There will be a fixed dock that's about 128 feet long, and at the end of that will be a, almost a turnaround or a landing area, where it's just a little wider at the end. I think it goes out to about six feet. And with, the rest of the pier is a standard width of four feet, which is consistent with, this type of pier design is consistent with the village code, and it is also consistent with the requirements of New York State DEC. One of the features will be to allow shoreline traversing. In other words, if you're walking on the shoreline, you can go up a series of steps on the south side and down a series of steps on the north side to have a continuous walkway across the beach at high tide, and then, of course, you can pass under at low tide if you so choose. At the end of the fixed portion will be a 30-foot gangway that makes the transition from the fixed dock to a float, and that basically enables access to boats. If you had an elevated fixed pier, it would be very difficult to get in smaller recreational boats. So the gangway goes to a float that is 30 feet long, eight feet wide, held in place by pilings, and, as I said, is accessed by the gangway. Now, that boat goes up and down with the tide. We have about a six to seven foot tidal range, and so we have to account for that with the ramp. That's one of the reasons why it's 30 feet long, so as it goes up and down, you have a reasonable slope at low tide to get to the float. The float will be in a minimum of two and a half feet of water at low tide. That's the back end of the float. And that, again, is, as I said, so it does not rest on the harbor bottom and destroy ventic life. It'll be approximately three and a half feet at the deeper end at low tide. So this is clearly for use by smaller vessels at low tide, certainly, and whatever, you know, use that individuals and voters may use it for, primarily to access their boats. And again, this went through a good deal of thought and consideration by the village board of trustees, and we're really just considering design. But if there are specific questions on these, we can help answer them. The dock will have water service, I believe also electric. It's just gonna have water service. It will have water service, and it will have solar-powered rail lighting for nighttime, as well as two white solar navigation lights on the pilings at the end of it. And so that really summarizes the overall design features. We have very detailed design and construction plans, all of the pilings and the stringers and decking, kind of that comprise the installation. Railings have been designed with aesthetics in mind to minimize the mass and appearance, but also to provide safety. And all of those plans are part of the package that is pending for the village, as well as details and cut sheets for the lighting. These are the solar lights for navigational purposes. These are the rail lights. It's a product that we have found to be very effective, especially, you know, given it's solar-powered. And that really includes the specific components of the installation. There has been consideration of construction and access and, you know, how you would get equipment and stage all of those materials for the installation, and that, you know, those areas are shown on the diagrams. So Ted?
All right. Well, great.
Gives us an overview of the plans and a little bit more detail, but we can get into as much detail as needed depending on the questions.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you, gentlemen. The plans are available at the village. Yes. What I'd like to do is start with comments on this end of the room and work our way across. The, we have a stenographer that's recording the meeting, so I'll need you to state your name and address, and if you need them to come up?
If they could.
If you can't hear them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so are there any, we have comments from this side of the room? Thanks.
Cindy Davis, Birchwood Avenue, and I just had a question. So if you're walking along, do you have to go up and down steps to get past the dock?
You can either pass under at lower tide stages.
Right, look, if it's not.
Or if it's high tide, you can go up and down steps on your side.
And there'll be railing?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just concerned about people who have difficulty maneuvering putting steps in their way.
Okay.
Holy Chitlak, Washington Street. I saw in the new law that this was supposed to be posted at California Park, 28 days prior to this public hearing, and it wasn't. Correct, Roger?
Oh, I'm not sure about the times, but there was supposed to be signs.
At the waterways.
At the water side and at the land side at the site of the dock.
I didn't notice a sign.
No, I've been there every day, three times a day. Not one sign's been made.
What's up to you and what's up to me? So I said I put it down to use.
I have videos every day.
Okay.
I just have, I want to note that I have video every day, and it's not been posted.
There is a posting reform, it's not 28 days.
Well, but it's still not there, so.
So we're just, I'd suggest that the record show based on Joe's notes when the sign was put up.
Okay. Yeah, those notifications will be part of the record.
And could I give you my videos that hasn't been there as part of the record?
Well, I...
They're dated.
Wouldn't a video?
They're all dated, time dated.
Wouldn't normally be something that you could submit into the record? If you liked, if you have a copy that you would like to have made part of the record, if it's a copy, you could do it.
Okay, I will, thank you. I'll bring it to village hall.
Okay. So we'll move to this side of the room? Oh, yeah. Oh, so on this side? Okay.
Carol, that's at Chesna. While you're talking about the postings, I just have a question. There's, were two notices in the last local newspaper, one in this column and one in that column. The one in this column said the meeting was on January 10th in village hall, and then one column over, if you kept reading, that he said there's a meeting January 3rd here. So are we gonna accommodate the people who said, oh, I found the meeting on January 10th, who fell in village hall next week? I mean, it was just very contradictory.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the...
I have, I read the newspaper some.
All I know is that notifications were made and that they'll be part of the record, so...
So is there a meeting next week?
There's not a meeting next week.
So maybe we need to send an email or something to tell people the meeting happened.
Well, the meeting's gonna stay open, so people will have an opportunity to comment on it.
Right, right.
Mark, I couldn't hear what you said.
The meeting's gonna stay open, so people will have a chance to comment until we make a, we have some more postings and...
You mean at a later time?
That's right.
I'm sorry, I just walked in at a later time, you mean?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, I explained earlier is that the second notification was a little short on the time that it needs to be done, so we are extending the length of this hearing until a notification, the second notification can be made again.
All right, thank you.
And then, so I'm anticipating that this meeting will continue through January 29th. And at that time, we will have no public meeting, comment, time to provide comments, and also accepting written comments.
Okay.
Susan Liskowski, Pope.
Stand up.
Susan Liskowski, Pope. I just don't, maybe someone could explain why notices don't go out through the village about these meetings? We get notices about Santa Claus coming to town and journalistic notices about what to do in a storm, as though we didn't know to have batteries and flashlights and stuff. How come it's not, how come we don't get a notice from the village?
Well, we're the Planning Board.
An email, though, an email.
Yeah, we're the Planning Board, we're not the...
No, I know, but I know there are people, I guess I would address that to, then Joe, who's our clerk.
And it's something, I guess, to bring up, maybe.
Village calendar has every meeting at this village hall.
Yeah.
And what, why don't you just, why don't you specifically, like, write an email? It's certainly as important as...
Okay. All right, I don't think, you know, this notification stuff might be something that could be discussed at a village meeting, and not for us here. The purpose for this meeting is to comment on the design of the dock.
No questions, okay. Just out of, just before coming here, looking at the news about the snowstorm and all of that, you were talking about how ice that gets formed on, I think it was in Cape Cod, how ice chunks can come up and do damage to docks. What would be, what would ensure in this design against that problem?
Yeah, there's provisions for that, I believe.
Yes, this was covered in a feasibility study that we prepared, and also under the village code, there's a requirement for a management plan for the installation itself. That was prepared and approved by the village board of trustees, and that does specifically to, you know, the fact that maintenance will be needed, float will have to be removed seasonally, placed somewhere in an upland location, and that a bubbler installation could be installed to circulate water around the pilings if there are freezing conditions. It is understood, and it's recognized in the management plan, and trustees recognize that when you install a dock, it's in the elements of the marine environment, and it will require maintenance. So I know that they have made provisions for funding of ongoing maintenance, but that has been covered and is contemplated in this design.
Okay, let's go, Roger. So Roger Flood, then Front Manor Road. So mention was made of electricity service to the dock and also to the potential need for bubblers. Should electricity be provided to the dock if it's anticipated that there'll be occasions where bubblers, which are supposedly driven by electricity, are needed? So I'll put all the questions out there. The second one has to do with upland storage of the floats, and I believe the management plan called for using a crane to get the floats out of the water. It wasn't clear whether that crane was used from the water side or the land side, and also, because that would affect how much trampling of the beach there might be, and also whether there was a specific location identified for this upland storage. I thought the management plan said in parking lot, so these things would be sitting in the parking lot all winter. So we're not sure that that was a good idea, especially given that town maintains a dock right down the harbor, and they seem to be in a prepared, they have a place to store floats and, and... So that's number two. Number three is, sort of concerns the town, also whether it's, has been any indication of what, how the town used this permit request, and whether they might add any requirements that would be unacceptable to the village. I'm not sure what those might be, but it seems premature to proceed too far without knowing what the town's, and also DEC's opinion of the precise details of this plan, because it might get partway through and, you know, get told something has to happen that's not in the interests of the village. The next item has to do with passage, you have to describe a route over the dock and where to pass under it. However, the village code also says that there has to be a path around the landward edge of the dock. I haven't heard any discussion of such path around the landward end, and so it seems unacceptable that, especially in light of comments about accessibility, that one who's pointed the riprout, say, con the riprout, you get around, and I think I'll stop there for a moment.
Okay, thank you, Roger. As far as electricity, there were various options outlined in terms of the utilities on the dock, and it was determined that water was the one that was of primary importance and was the one who's provided. There is an electrical pole, there's lighting, there's an ability to do a takeoff to feed electricity, should a temporary bubbler system be needed. So that would have to be monitored and determined if it will be installed and if an electric takeoff would take place. As far as upland storage, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the electric, real quick, one consideration that kind of dissuaded us from pursuing the fixed electric at this time was that it would have to be a full electric service that would have to be provided, not just tapping off of an existing service. And some of the flood zone requirements of that, although achievable at this time, it seemed like it was the best path forward, to power with solar for the lighting. I believe that there's also solar bubblers as well that are available on the market, but that, that has not been fully addressed at this time.
Thanks. And as far as storage of the floats, I mean, they could, well, first of all, I think the probable method would be from the upland. In other words, there are a lot of companies out there that have very large cranes. I'm a member of Sotaki Dock Club, and I help with the hauling of the floats every year, and the cranes that they have now have an incredible reach. So all you'd really have to do is, you know, have a couple of volunteers or just contract to have it done, float, float the floats to an area where the crane could reach them, and that would likely be in the area at the south end of the parking area, away from the riprout where there is some access. It's usually advisable to do it at high tide, and it's done commonly throughout Fort Jefferson Harbor complex for these types of installations. As far as where to put it, that's really quite flexible. I said a suitable upland location, and that's the intent. As you observe, the town, you know, places floats in the town parking lot downtown. I guess the presumption is you don't need as much parking during the winter months, but they could be stored in the, you know, in the grassed area where the baseball backstop is, it could be in the parking lot. I think that would have to be determined just on, you know, operations of the village and where the most sensible location is. As far as permits, all permits have been applied for. We do have New York State Department of State Concurrents indicating that now the Army Corps can proceed, they typically take a little bit of time. We've had permits pending with the town of LeCavon and DEC. We've received comment letters back from each of them, so they've been logged in, and we've responded to all outstanding comments at this time. We do not expect anything at this point that would alter the plans that we have prepared based on the comments we have, and we did do pre-applications with all of the agencies to, you know, really get their sense of the project. I will say that this is a very straightforward installation. It's very similar to what you see for recreational piers for residential homes around the harbor, and, you know, it's nothing that was abnormal or unusual to the agencies, and that's reflected in their comments to date. As far as passing over and under, I did speak to that, and certainly there's a grassed area, as you know, above landward of the existing riprout. We have a five-foot-by-five-foot concrete ADA accessible landing, so that this entire fixed pier is ADA accessible out to the turnaround, and there's grassed area on each side of that five-by-five landing that allows for traversing on the shoreline. So it certainly doesn't impede anything, if anything, because you have a crossing over the riprout and then stairs down the beach. It's actually much more accessible than it was, and you can still pass on the landward side as you would now, behind the riprout in that beach grass area. I think that was all.
So one end, if you're familiar with the site, you know that on the south side, there is a launch ramp, you can walk up that. But on the north side, it's just, I think all of the village land has either that cement wall or this riprout, and I think it's, I would not call pointing to the beach and say you could walk down there if you, if for some reason you can't go over, you know, there's some problem with the stairs or whatever. That doesn't meet the intent or the words of the law to say that a path has to be provided, and that a path presumably moves some rocks and puts in some steps and creates a path, and this plan doesn't create a path. It says that you should be able to do it, and that's not what's...
Yeah, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
So I think, you know, that's... To say that it does not have a path, I think is the, maybe the definition of what a path is. In this case, a path is the ability to traverse around the end of the obstacle, so the dock's not impeding the walker from traveling along the beach. So that was the intent of the stairway, to create a access path. So is it a foot, is it a path in a sense? Yes. It is a path. Is it a cobblestone walking path? No. So the rule, the guidance in this law that Ted mentioned says that a route shall be provided for pedestrian traffic over as well as around the landward end of the dock, and I think it got over covered. It doesn't seem that anything in this plan meets the need of a route being provided for pedestrian traffic around the landward end, which is, there's nothing there that even addresses it. Well, it's certainly a challenge to provide that from the beach side without going over it, because you have to connect it to the accessible parking stall, so you have to have that access. Now, essentially, what, the way that this has been perceived is that we have a dock section, and then we have an accessible access section. And the dock section ends at, I mean, high water, and then we have a ramp section after that to meet federal code. I understand your concern. Either you don't have to park over the dock, or you don't have to park around the dock. dock, but it seems that, that no interpretation of this can be said to be addressed by this point.
I, I mean, all I can say is I disagree, and I know you said that we cover the, over the ripract and down the beach access, that that's not, not part of the question. The question is around the shoreline side of the installation.
Right.
And there is nothing, it actually is the same as it is, it allows access around the shoreline side of the installation. If you're behind the ripract, you can go on either side of this dock, just as you do now.
But how, but how do you get to the beach once you're north, north of the dock? What's, what's the path from the grass to the lake?
It's no different than it is now.
Right.
In other words, you're going to scramble over the...
Except this dock.
And then build a path.
That's what you're asking me to do. Well, I think, I think this is pretty clear that it, that someone is supposed to build a path.
I think this is something, something we should just, you know, we'll take that into consideration in our findings.
And we review the, and we review the law, we review the definition, and consult with the village attorney.
Well, I will also point out that, that both the attorney and our building department here work for the trustees, they don't work for the planning board, and so I think that has to be taken into account as both these entities provide input, that they're here to support the trustees, not here to report.
That's your opinion?
That's my opinion.
Thank you. So another comment here?
Jeff Coplison, Chesna Avenue. At the, what about trustees, it means quite a lot, but we did address that. And there is a sort of a step at the northeastern corner of the grassy areas, and those people use it. And the discussion was, is that going to be adequate once the structure is built?
So by northeastern corner, do you mean by the farm pit of that farm?
Yes, yes, and, and the discussion was, we can address that if that is deemed to be inadequate, because it is not, it's not very even, and to very easily put in a stone step that will allow access that way, which is what most people do now, that most people don't walk across that, because, across the beach at that point, because it's not very desirable with all the rocks and everything. But the discussion also said that you could take the code, the regulations literally, or as it was intended, which was that around the bend, there were structures that were impeding people from continuing to walk along the beach. And it was very clear that the intent was to not have the walkers blocked, that you should be able to go past. And I think it was you, in fact, who had brought up, well, literally, it says along the beach, and none of us...